Let's go. Let's go. He'll go pull himself in. Yeah, let's go. Will you pull it? Pull it in. Yes. No, you can pull it up. They will pull both. They will pull both or one? Okay.
Good evening. We are now back in open session. Mrs. Davis, would you please call the room? Present.
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 Public participation none. Staff reports to Dr. Porterie.
President Ambrose, trustees, thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to have some fun. First of all, it's always good to see a lot of people in the audience. So we're ecstatic about that. So usually it's just us here. So we're, we're happy to see all of you here. We have a group, first thing we need to talk about, we have a group of young ladies. And I'm telling you, they're ours. They're from this community. They're making us proud. They're our kids. And they are some of the fastest, fastest spreaders. Eight-year-old young ladies in the nation, in the nation. So give them a big hand. These ladies ran, they run in the Golden Triangle Track Club. And we would like to acknowledge Coach Connor and Coach Barry, who's here with us tonight. I'm going to ask Coach Barry to come forward to give us who, who they are and tell us what happened. But they went all the way to North Carolina. So they practiced all summer long. They were running. They got to Carolina and competed and came in second in the nation. So you young ladies, come forward, come forward. We want to see you. Come forward. They have their medals on. Come on, yeah, come up to the front. I'm going to ask Mrs., uh, come to the front and you can face, face the audience. Look at them smiling, the medals on them, look at their shirts. I mean, and they don't even know who this is, but I'm going to say this. They remind me of Flojo. Now, people my age know who Flojo is. She was beautiful, beautiful, fine Flojo. Look at these young ladies here. They remind me of Flojo. So I'm going to ask Mr. Barry to come forward. Ms. Barry, you can talk, uh, take the mic and tell us exactly what happened and we'll move forward.
Um, thank you guys for having us. We've been at this for two years. Uh, we got a two-time junior Olympian in Chloe. She went last year when it was in Houston. She got, what, she went in long jump last year, but this year she went, um, in long jump and the four by one. Chloe, raise your hand. This is Chloe Jubert. She was one of our, uh, our second leg. Uh, we have Taryn Antoine. She was our first leg on the relay. Taryn, you want to wave at them? Then we have Peyton. She's a newcomer, well, these two are newcomers. We have Peyton Gonzalez. She was our third leg on the relay. And our fourth leg was Leila Booker. She's right here. Uh, Leila, Leila also qualified in the 100 and 200 as well. And, um, is ranked in the nation in those races as well, as well as Chloe too. She's ranked in the 100. Um, so this summer, these, we had enough kids to put together a relay, um, for our eight-year-old, for our eight-year-olds, um, the third, second or third track meet, I think, um, they was already number one team in the nation. Um, they ran, I think it was like 104 or something like 105 in the four by one and they were number one. So from that time on, they was just, you know, PR in every track meet, every track meet, they were trying to get better. And, um, so when we got to North Carolina, the first, the first day when they ran, uh, the first day when they ran, um, we actually had bad handoffs and they still ran a faster time than they've ever ran. They went 102. And then the next day, um, in the finals, they went one minute, they dropped two seconds in the finals. Perfect handoffs and they were in, they, I mean, they just did a phenomenal job all year. So we wanted to just give this opportunity to honor them. Thank you, Dr. Porterie and the board for allowing us to come to honor our kids.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, Ms. Lot, would you come and give them? We have, we have little gifts for you as appreciation. So they're for you and Ms. Leila, Leila, right there. We'll get a picture of it. Hold it from the bottom. Yeah. And what's, tell us what school you go, what's school? What school do you attend? At Terrell Elementary. Highland Park. Which one? What school? Lady, lady.
Congratulations.
All right. Well, parents, once again, thank you for sharing your children with us. We have, we have a memorial coach back there, lady coach back there. Look at her, she's looking, she's trying to see which one coming to her. So, um, yeah, so Coach Roberts is here and she's just, she's just smiling because she knows some, some champions are coming her way. So thank you so much, parents, for allowing us this time. I know it's late, but thank you for just coming out and to our, our young winners again, just keep on running, keep on making us proud because you are all our children. So we love you and you're ours. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have the PA, PA United, Project Life Changes, uh, one of our own. Trustee Gilery is part of that group. And we have, let's see, I think Pastor Chapman is here. Reverend Chapman, Reverend Chapman, Chapman, Reverend Chapman is, Chapman is here. And he's going to talk to us a minute.
Uh, thank you once again. Uh, thank you for having us, uh, this evening. Thank you, Dr. Porterie, Madam President, to the rest of the board members, the staff and the audience as well. We are excited to be here this evening to be able to speak to you. Uh, first of all, I want to personally, uh, alone with my colleagues with PA United and Project Life Changes, just to thank you guys for being standing, uh, giving of your time, giving of yourselves. Uh, I've been an elected official before and I understand how much it takes of your personal time to come to be a representative. And none of us are perfect, but I want to recognize you for doing the great job that you're doing in this district, uh, educating our children as well, uh, doing a job that you really shouldn't be doing. And that's, uh, handling a lot of the disciplinary actions with our children. Uh, Dr. Porterie has allowed us to be in PA ISD teaching with Project Life Changes. I don't know if I have any of other team members here, uh, as I look around. I was just going to ask them to stand to be recognized. But, uh, we're here today because, uh, Dr. Porterie has been so gracious, uh, to allow Project Life Changes to be in the school district, being a mentor program, uh, specifically to the young men in PA ISD. So I want to, once again, just raise your hand and just thank you for that, for trusting us for so many years to do that. Uh, we have been spread out throughout the district for years. Of course, COVID kind of knocked the program off, but we were able to get back into the schools in the last quarter of last year. Uh, we have two questions. Uh, the reason that I'm here today. And the first question that we have, uh, as being on the campuses, we're concerned about the safety of the children, but as well as our safety as well, because we do have team members that's on those campuses also. So the first question that we have is could we get a report on, of the camera usage? Is every campus covered 100%? There's no blind areas on the campus? And the second part to that question pertaining to cameras is are there cameras positioned that can actually capture the adjacent properties to the schools? And I don't know if you want me to deal with that question first or just go ahead and ask both questions at the same time.
Um, just give your report and then we're going to move forward. And what we will move forward with may answer your questions.
Okay. And, and those questions, we didn't really have a report. We're coming for information. Uh, I really didn't have anything to bring forward, but with us being on those campuses, we want information to where the cameras are. Is the, uh, entire campus covered or there's no blind spots? And can we capture the adjacent areas to the schools? So if something happens directly across the street, do we have cameras that can capture that as well? Or are the cameras just pointed at the campus itself? Second part of the question is the buzzer system. When people go to the campuses and they try to enter, I noticed that the campus that I'm on, and I go to pack, uh, every Tuesday, and I noticed that there's a buzzer system. So first part of the question, does every campus have a buzzer system? Uh, when people try to walk in, they just can't walk in, they need to be buzzed in. And we would just like information on how does that buzzer system actually work? Uh, is there something that they can see inside the building? Or do they actually have to look out at the door to see who they're getting ready to let in? And that's, that's the, uh, crux of the matter for us. We want to understand how much of the campuses are covered by cameras? And are we aware of everybody that we're just buzzing in?
Reverend Chapman, uh, thank you for the questions that you have. Uh, but before we move on, pick up the mic one more time. Why don't you discuss what you were doing on the campuses, first of all? I know you want to know about everything.
I didn't want to take up a lot of time, but, but thank you. Uh, what we are, uh, PA United, first of all, I'm here representing two groups today. PA United, under the leadership of Judge Tom Gillum III, uh, he had a brainstorm after dealing with so much violence in our city, uh, and burying so many young men by drive-by shootings, that he had an idea to bring all entities, all people helping entities in this community together. Because what we found is there, there are a lot of nonprofits and a lot of people helping entities in Port Arthur, but we work independent of one another. So with PA United for Change, what Judge Gillum, uh, did at the beginning of this year is he, he has now bought all of these people helping organizations under one umbrella. We're in the process of making a directory. So anyone in the community of Port Arthur that needs assistance, you don't need to go running from pillar to post. You can come to PA United and we have a directory where we can direct you to help. If you need help with housing, we have somebody that's part of PA United in housing. You need help with medical, you need help with a job, we, we are in touch with Texas workforce. So that's basically PA United in a nutshell. Uh, Project Life Changes is a youth mentor, primarily boys. We're a youth mentoring organization and we've been mentoring young men in Port Arthur since 2012 with the Pre-Sec, uh, the Pre-Sec Eight, Justice of the Peace. He refers a vast majority of the truancy cases to us and we mentor those young men. And we have a real good success rate since 2012. 2015, we brought this idea to Dr. Porterie and he allowed us to go on campus as well, uh, to be able to mentor the young men. Uh, we're in the process right now, for the first time, of having a, a, a female side of Project Life Changes, where Pastor, uh, Malo, Pastor Janice Malo and, uh, Pastor Yoshi Alexander, they're heading up the female side of the organization for us. So they can, uh, I don't know if you call it mentor or woman tour to the young ladies. So, uh, that's what Project Life Changes is. And we've been in the school district for several years. We've been working with the Pre-Sec Eight Justice of the Peace for seven, for several years. And we have a very good success rate. We haven't saved them all, but we have saved many.
Thank you, thank you. And we thank you for your work and the work of others and we hope to generate more. I will answer, uh, will generally answer your questions. And we have people coming up and you'll hear more about what we're doing. Um, I'm, I'm ecstatic, happy, and we will never be satisfied with what we're doing on campuses in order to secure our students and our staff members. Uh, you'll hear more tonight. We have some people coming up. We have our own police force. We do have cameras on every, on every campus. And there is, um, there, they can see it from their monitors on their desk, who's coming to the door. And there's perimeter cameras all around. Um, you'll hear a lot tonight, but of course, in our readings, and I'm going to assume that the police will tell you that we can't say everything that we're doing because it's just not beneficial to us. If someone is going to surprise us with something, we want to surprise them. So obviously you're not going to hear everything we're doing. And I'm going to ask that our police officers don't divulge everything that we do in order for us to continue to be safe. But I think if you listen, your answers will come to you tonight. Okay? And thank you again for everything that you do to help us. And, and I'm not going to say we don't need the help. We definitely need the help. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask, uh, for Chief Bays and Chief Wilson to come. But no, but first, let me wait, wait first. Is Cruz available?
I think they're available.
Okay, great. Uh, uh, do we have them on the line?
Do we have them online? Um, Mr. Boone, Mr. Lee?
Okay. I'll ask, uh, Dr. Getwood to introduce. We have a quick, uh, we, the board voted, thank you for voting on, um, a payment to allow a group to come in to see if they could just come in unannounced on our campuses. And they did that for, on last week. So I'll ask Dr. Getwood to just introduce them and tell us exactly what went on with all of that.
Good evening, uh, Madam President, members of the Board of Trustees, superintendent of schools, Dr. Martin Porterie. Um, I would say one of the district's areas and a focus in strategic thinking is to continue positive and safe learning environments, environments and facilities. This, uh, area of focus is extremely important because of the national and local tragedies uh, that we have constantly have monitored, monitored and assessed. So I think it was June 1st, uh, Governor Abbott came out with some new mandates and it required a partial summer safety audit. And with that partial summer safety audit, a lot of things were introduced. And I'll just give you the highlights of those, um, things that became mandates from, uh, Governor Abbott. He said you had to conduct a summit target, uh, partial audit, conduct an, conduct an exterior door safety audit, convene the LEA's safety and, uh, the LEA's Safety and Security Committee to review the multi-hazard emergency operation plan, which is the EOP. And a component of the EOP, the ELA's Active Threat Plan. Then he goes through and he, uh, says that we must have certain drills and those drills must be given to campuses uh, prior to the start of the school year. Uh, and we have conducted, uh, we have not conducted the drills. We have provided the campuses with a list of the drills that we must do. And we also, um, uh, one of the major focuses of, uh, Governor Abbott's, uh, mandate, uh, mandates was single access entrance to buildings. Another thing he, uh, mandated was we have a way to control visitors. Uh, we have to have checkpoints there. He also talked about, uh, in his memo to us, uh, we needed to ensure that we had all exterior doors locked. And we needed to have interior doors locked and closed. Where classroom instruction is going on, and if classroom instruction is not going on, the doors should still be secured. And then he, as Dr. Porterie indicated, he talked about, um, the intruder, uh, detection audit. And with the intruder detection audit, you are trying to access a building and you're trying to access it to get in, to do whatever you want to do without being noticed. So, uh, those were the main focus, uh, the main ideals under the mandates, under, um, from Doctor, uh, from Greg Abbott, Governor Abbott. So what we did, um, you have to by September 9th, supply the governor's office and the Texas School Safety Center with information showing that you've conducted the partial summer targeted audit. So we contracted with a group called Crux Technology and Security Solutions. Uh, we have with us tonight, Mr. Jason Keller and Mr. Dennis Porter. They are both, uh, retired, uh, resource officers from school districts. And they go across the state of Texas conducting safety audits. And, uh, they are also vetted by TEA. They are part of the TEA registrar. And they will share with you, they conducted, uh, this audit of the district. I think it was the week of August 15th. And they will come tonight and share information, uh, with you regarding that. And I will say that the Safety and Security Committee for the district met on, uh, yesterday. Uh, and we have gone through some of the things that we were supposed to go through as far as the audit is concerned. And, uh, it was a powerful meeting and we had presenters at that meeting. But I think, uh, the two gentlemen that you're going to hear from tonight will bring you clearly up to date on what the results of that audit was. With no further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Porter and Mr. Keller.
Thank you, Dr. Edward. Thank you, super, thank you. Yes. Can anybody hear me? The 30th of September, this is Port Arthur community, out of this lot. We certainly, we, we, members of your district. We felt that there was a genuine interest in improving the safety and security amongst the staff. You have a highly vigilant staff, holding safety and security as a top priority. Dennis and I have traveled across the state, as Dr. Getwood pointed out. But we've also traveled internationally. And I've been to places where they don't have a lot of the bells and whistles. They don't have the technology. And so you have to do more with less. And what we found in your district is that your people are, are putting, to make sure that, that you're in a, a, a position where someone is trying to get into your facility, like what we did last week, and you're denied at all access points because of your staff and students being trained in the manner in which they are. Um, we've conducted these assessments for healthcare facilities, corporate entities, and we don't often see the same level of commitment. Um, we did conduct a 47-point checklist that covers the partial audit for the summer, an intruder assessment, and inspected all the exterior hardware for functionality. And we reported our findings back to Dr. Getwood and members of the district so that way some of those issues could be resolved expeditiously. Um, we followed the template that the TEA, the Texas Education Agency, the Texas School Safety Center and representatives from your regional service center. Uh, we began the audit by meeting with your leadership team to assess the current conditions, any ongoing issues and course future developments per statutory requirements. We are pleased to report that your district met the requirements for ensuring that the Safety and Security Committee reviewed their multi-hazard emergency operations plan. They've completed the procedures to conduct the weekly access control checks on all exterior doors, meaning there is a procedure in place for the staff to make sure throughout the week that those doors are latched properly. They've completed a written policy on directing, um, that all classrooms remain locked and closed when students are present. They've ensured that the school behavioral threat assessment teams have received the state mandated training and review the campus-specific procedures. They've ensured that staff and substitutes have been trained in district campus safety procedures. As Dr. Getwood alluded to earlier, they've, they've made an emphasis of getting the schedules out there for all the required drills. They are to be commended for having the staff monitor the entrances, the breezeways, the hallways, the stairwell and restrooms. Those are areas that oftentimes do not have adequate staffing. And as we've seen play out, you know, across the world, that when you don't have adequate staff in place, bad things can happen. One of the things I will point out that, that is also very problematic is that many districts have, have a culture of having prop doors. Out of about 400 doors for your district, I saw four instances where a prop may be used. Of course, those findings were reported to the staff so that they could be removed, but that's less than 1%. I can't say that with success across the state that, that, that same percentage would apply. Um, we also noticed that there was a, you're fortunate, you had your own ISD police force. Uh, the chiefs were there in the meetings with us and, um, we were able to bring them up to speed with our findings, but they maintain a highly visible presence around campus, the way they situate their police cars, the way their teams conduct patrols. Um, the instances where doors seem to not be latching properly, more orders were generated and teams were jumping at, at those, uh, potential security gaps. They implemented a written policy, um, you know, on, on, as I said earlier, about all the classroom doors remain locked. Now, the, the thing here is to remember is that if your classroom doors aren't shut and locked, you know, if you have adjoining rooms, that also applies to every room, whether there's students in that room or not. And that's what your district is doing. Uh, they also outnumbered all of the entrances. So when you drive your campuses in your district, you'll notice that there are numbering, there's a numbering system outside the doors. That door, uh, the door numbering system was a point of emphasis from the governor's office to make sure that one, uh, first responders know exactly where potentially the threat is, um, for a, a more, uh, immediate response. But it also allows people indoors to kind of get their, you know, uh, bearings straight as to where they are, especially like new students and stuff like that. Campuses were well-kept, um, as far as grounds and facilities. As far as the intruder assessment, that's kind of where the, you know, the, the whole emphasis is, can people get in? And right now, the district has a policy where they're not letting visitors in. Um, and, and so it was very apparent when I was trying to get in through the various access points of, you know, 21 facilities, that I was unable to do so 99.9% of the time. And so with that, um, I'd like to turn it over to Dennis, if you have anything to add. But it was certainly a pleasure to be across your campuses last week.
No, thank you, Jason. Now, as Jason has said, we were, we were pleasantly surprised by the level of commitment to safety and security that this district has. And, you know, and I don't say that lightly. Like I said, we, we travel all over. I see a lot of different districts, a lot of districts larger. I've been to some smaller. Um, but bottom line is, it, when you have that level of safety and security awareness, it starts from the top. Um, every one of the administrators that I came upon were generally concerned. I, I was very impressed with some of the things that I saw. Um, and I apologize, I forget the principal's name there, your, your alternative education center, but he was right, she was the first one to greet me in the morning. Um, she's outside, making sure that things are the way they're supposed to be. We look for all these things because in, in all honesty, unfortunately, as we travel around, we do see districts that do not have that same level of commitment. Um, and, and it's unfortunate, but it, one of the reasons we do this is to bring some type of awareness. Um, awareness there for your district was, like I said, uh, the visitor policy and the visitor management procedures that you have in place at this time were excellent. And so, you know, we, we always want to say the kudos. We'll tell you when things are bad, but we also want to tell you when things are good. Um, and this district has a, obviously has a high level of commitment towards getting the safety and security of every one of these campuses and where it needs to be. Um, even if, when we found, you know, a door that may not shut the way it's supposed to, well, they were right on top of it, sending someone out to make sure that, that that was taken care of. And so, and, and that's all the state's looking for. The state's not trying to be heavy-handed. The state's trying to get districts to deal with the issues that they might have in hand, because every district's going to have something going on. I, I don't care, I don't care where you're at. So it's, it's, it was really pleasing for us to, uh, have the opportunity to work with your district and, and how they treated us and how they also responded, uh, to their levels of commitment to safety.
And sometimes they responded over the top. Uh, I know that Officer Gunner and Sanford probably scared me the way they, uh, yelled and got my attention when I was walking around the Alternative Center. And, and, and that's just to name it, you know, one example. There was example after example of, you know, from everything, from a, an administrator to a, a staff member, and what we look for a lot of times is, you know, we try to talk quietly at the door to see if somebody opened the door so they can hear us, because really that's, people don't feel comfortable when they can't necessarily, if you talk softly, they kind of want to get into that space and, and, and kind of welcome you. And, and that's not what we were finding. They were talking through the doors. And so as parents, you should feel good about, you know, the staff here at, at Port Arthur. You know, i- i- in a lot of aspects, you know, we could have, you know, if, if we had an endless number of assets to grow at it, then certainly we could make our schools, you know, more like fortresses, but we don't. And so you have to have the human element, and that's what we saw time and time again here with Port Arthur.
Thank you, and we will not hold any more of your time, but thank you for agreeing to come back and speak to our board tonight. Thank you again, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sir. Thank you.
Next, I'm going to ask Chief Base and Chief Wilson to come forward. Chief Base is the Chief of Police for P A I S D and Chief.
How y'all doing? Yeah, I'm Chief Base. Don't know if you're Chief, Chief Base for I S D. For our police department. It's my buddy, Dean. We've, uh, we've worked together for the past thirty years. I trust this man with my life. Uh, we worked undercover a long time. I trust this man with my life. He trusts me with his. It's, it's my buddy. It's my buddy. Uh, I'm familiar with a lot of the board members, but not all of the board members. And if y'all, if y'all don't know me, y'all know I'm serious about taking care of my business. James, you know. Taylor. Ms. Whiteoff, I'm not sure if I know you that well. I think I know some of your family, though. Brandon. Martine, you know. Dr. Porter, you know. Ms. Ambrose. I've heard of you, I haven't been at your company much, but from what I hear, you've been a thief. All right? Mr. Lofton, you know. Mr. Northseas, you knew little guy. Right? Mr. Gilbert, you know me. All right? The man, uh, Melody Carey, attorney, law firm, I met you. A while back, you seemed like you're pretty, not yet, I felt pretty short. Pretty short guy, but I still, I read people very well. You're pretty short. Uh, Mr. Watt, you good for me. You know. All right, like I said, all people is always my friend. I am going to, yes. Send some G P M's, ask some goodness for y'all. Go pass out. And there's something inside. You are all my friends.
I never bring a movie, cuz.
Okay, thank you.
If he likes it, though. Go ahead, A B. All right. Like I said, you are my friends. I will protect you all. I will take bullet for you all. I will die for you all, even if you hurt not my friends. I do say. Why, that's a bit. That's my call, to protect children, the elderly, women, men. Right, that's my call. I know this man will take care of business without a doubt. I want everyone to realize right now in this room that can hear my voice, I will not hesitate to get involved in firefighting, protect y'all, or these children, these staff members, and who's the soldiers, everybody. I will not hesitate to get involved in firefighting. And yes, like Dr. Porter said, we're not going to tell y'all all our secrets. And we're not, don't want to know. We're not. Now, with that being said, I just want to go through a few things here to, uh, let you all, or enlighten you all, of what we do. Let's set our students, staff, and staff up. All right? We're good. All right. Our P A I S D Police Department protocol is to immediately confront and stop the threat, even though this may mean the loss of life to one or more of our officers. This is what we signed up for, and each officer understands the risks involved in confronting and acting shooter. In light of what's happened and evolving, everybody's on the edge right now, all over the country. All over the country, U S and everywhere else. We, P A I S D Police Department, we're going to take care of business. We don't get involved in that firefight, even if. Like I said, it's what we signed up for. And let that be no doubt, we will get involved. Right? Is that clear? Everybody, we will try to protect you. Okay? All right. The safety of our students, staff, and staff are of the utmost importance to us. Their safety is our primary focus. We currently have a total of nine police officers of the P A I S D Police Department at their station in parish schools throughout the district. We're hoping in the near future, with the board's approval, to add in addition to three officers to our force to more adequately provide security coverage to our school campuses. All right? All of our campuses are not equipped with metal detectors to better assist us with timely security measures from each of our school campuses and prevent weapons from entering our buildings. We work hand-in-hand with the P A I S D Department, Rupp's City, Rupp's Reo. We all work together, we have meetings, try to come up with the best solution to increase our security. Uh, our officers currently assist with school intake in the mornings and students pass through metal detectors. Officers are also present and visible during school dismissal as well and ready to intervene in disturbance that may arise. During the school day, when classes are in session, our officers are controlling the hallways and periodically checking to make sure all exterior building doors are locked. Officers are present in the hallways during class transition as well, and they're monitoring students and ready to intervene if a disturbance happens to occur. Officers periodically patrol school parking lots when classes are in session, looking to confront any suspicious persons on campus to ascertain their reason for being on campus. We also have off-duty Port Arthur Police Officers working in some of our schools to help increase security measures of certain campuses. Some Port Arthur officers also sit controlling campuses during school dismissal as well. If a circumstance involves our department needing backup to handle an emergency situation, such as, such as an active shooting incident, y'all can rest assured that we have support and backup from the Port Arthur Police Department, the Groves Police Department, the Fort Days Police Department, the Needland Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, as well as the F B I, D E A, and A T L due to the excellent working relationships that we've established with these agencies over the years. We now have a firepower in our arsenal to match or exceed what the active shooter may be carrying through that attack. Our officers have received intense armed training and are very proficient with their weapons. Our officers clearly understand that the task at hand during an active shooter situation is to attack and perpetrate and stop the threat, even if the circumstances dictate that the officers go in alone. In addition to having adequate firepower to confront an active shooter, we've also recently acquired additional combat equipment, such as bulletproof shields, tactical helmets, rifle plagues, battered ram, flash hammers, and tourniquets. As a part of keeping our kids safe, under certain circumstances, we will transport a student home or to school during emergency situations. When the parent is sudden without transportation, cannot find anyone to transport their kid to or from school. And we felt need for that. They talk all the time, do it, they do. We don't mind, y'all. We don't mind, we don't mind, but we don't get easy to bury off y'all. Y'all hear the teacher, y'all ain't got time to be worried about it. Rip it and run and protect the kids. So, so we don't mind assisting y'all on that, okay? Don't ever take a call. All right? Uh, as a part of keeping our students, staff, and staff safe, we provide all spectators at sporting events to pass through metal detectors or began walking before entering the school sports or sporting event. This is very important as we try to prevent anyone from disrupting a sporting event with the use of a weapon. We've received positive feedback from students, faculty, staff, and citizens that they now feel safer when attending sporting events at P A I S D facilities. Do y'all bounce for that? Do y'all feel safer?
Yes, yes, we do.
We, we respond to and investigate any social media threat or posting that, that's geared towards contemplating violence toward a member student, a faculty member, a staff member, or a particular, or a particular school itself. We work closely with Crime Stoppers in southeast Texas, and we encourage students and our parents, for which to remain anonymous, to report planned or suspected criminal activity to help to crime stop. We recently taught several active shooter courses to teachers, administrators, staff, and bus drivers as well. Mr. Meditana, teach some of his bus, uh, motor, all of them, right there. Okay, Google address. All right, we enjoy Mr. Med. Uh, during the summer months when school is not in session, officers train for active shooter and barricaded center situations inside of parish school buildings. All of our officers have received alert training, which is advanced law enforcement rapid response training. That's the training that starts throughout the state of Texas, and they train with other officers from surrounding agencies as well. All P A I S D officers are equipped with handheld radios that allows for communication with every law enforcement agency to swap tactical units as well as the firepower. We're currently in the process of developing some plans to present to superintendent in the near future on ways to tighten security around the perimeter and in the parking lots of some of our larger campuses. This is all in there to control vehicles and foot traffic on our school parking lots during school hours. This plan will include having a stationed guard at the school parking lot entrance to identify visitors as they arrive on the parking lot to ascertain their purpose of being on the parking lot or being in our campus. As school threats continue to rise across the U S, officers of the P A I S D Police Department will continue to seek ways to tighten our security on our school campuses to help make our students, staff, and staff feel safer while learning, teaching, or working at facilities owned by the Port Arthur Independent School District. And I, I want to reiterate the fact that we will get involved in fighting. We won't let, leave y'all hanging. Thank you all for that. We, you got, we appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Oh, I got one.
Go ahead, Mr. Lofton.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Out of those three officers that we, uh, additional officers that we need,
Yes, sir.
how many else are going to be women?
We don't know yet. It's according to who apply.
Okay.
But we're looking, we're looking for female.
Okay.
We very much like to have some female on our force.
All right.
It's more.
I got one. I'm going to send it to you.
Yeah, we love you.
I do have a question. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ambrose.
Theoretically, what would be your response time in the event of an emergency situation?
Such an active shooter?
Yeah, yeah.
We have officers stationed throughout the district. So it's according to which officer is closest to whatever location that threat is occurring. So, um, I'd say maybe five minutes. At the most, three to five minutes. Probably other people talking, particularly folks, O D S. And if any time, three to five officers at that booth, any time, I mean, sure, but just. There, there's three of our officers. And we hate you, or, or all, right? And we have an officer who reports that, and it's also a Port Arthur officer who reports that. And one thing that's very important is communication. When we go out on radio and say there's a situation going on at one of our schools, Port Arthur, Groves, Needland, everybody.
Okay, so if everyone would get that.
Oh, yes, ma'am. All we have is this on button, the word connected to Port Arthur. We need this back. Even if we can't get on the radio right away, get this on button, they clear there. We say, citizen, set up the flare we need, and everybody's. We're going to get there pretty fast, because we running with lives and sirens, officer.
I have one, I have one more question. Uh, I have a question. Uh, do all our officers have the capabilities we were saying with the equipment that we have? Uh, is it somewhere that they have to go, or we have that stationed in the cars, vehicles? So if something was to happen, they have the, uh, equipment on hand?
I'm going to put it like this, it's readily accessible.
Yes, thank you.
They can get their hands on it quick, very, very quick. I'm talking to seven.
Trust me.
Any other question?
Yeah, chief, does, does the administrator at each campus have a radio? Or what, what, what's the protocol for the administrators to get in contact with you?
Our officers on the campus.
So if there's an emergency, if there's an emergency.
Yeah, and that, that officer can relay it to us. Without communication, we don't.
And one thing that I will say, uh, chief, okay, Chief Base did say, you know, um, probability, once upon a time, when we looked at violence, we looked to the older students. But we do know that with Sandy Hook and Uvalde, Uvalde, um, it can happen on elementary campuses as well. And we, it is, it's, it's everywhere, all the time, twenty-four seven. You never, ever know what is going to happen. So in that case, every principal, every staff member is on alert. From the Wheatley Early Childhood to the Memorial High School, we all must be on alert for what may occur. And even with everything that we have, we still, every morning, we have to think about, this may be the morning. And that's hard to face, but when someone is out there and they're planning to do something, and you don't know, you have to be on guard. So with all of this, we appreciate it, but we can never, ever let our guards down, no matter where we are. Mr. Gilbert?
I just wanted to ask if there was any plans or any partnerships involved that you can kind of work with Port Arthur P D to kind of recruit some younger faces as well?
Actually, it's all, it's all based on what, just be honest with you. Because right now, for all, more than an hour before. Actually, it's all, it's all based on, just be honest with you, because right now, for all of our, more than an hour before.
Trustees.
Appreciate it.
Good evening. We, what, we're gonna talk about the, um, security cameras on the campuses. We, we, um, we have quite a few security cameras on our, on our campus, but I want to introduce the team that kind of worked with the security cameras, um, far as making sure they're up and running and they're being taken care of with maintenance and things like that. Have Mr. Terry Bellinger, he's the lead technical supervisor who's over this group, and Richard Tater, who's the network supervisor. And then we have, um, Mr. Jamie Court, who is the, he's the security camera guy. He's the one that really monitors and watches and take care of the cameras, making sure all of them are working each morning. They go through a cycle each day, him and, um, another guy that's not here, Jason. They go through the cameras on campuses and just view them to make sure that we don't have any that's not working, and if they are, we getting in work orders to get them fixed, to make sure we maintain them and keeping them working. Okay, we have, um, on our campuses, we have, um, throughout the camp, throughout the district, one thousand five hundred and twenty-nine cameras. And those cameras are, are, um, focused on different pro, um, air, problem areas that we know of, that we've worked with the campuses to find out what their problem areas were, and we put cameras there. They're on every entry and exit door, they're outside facing parking lots, all that, um, to make sure that everyone is being, being able to be viewed and safe in, in the schools. So, um, we ensuring our district is safe by, we're using a product called Video Insight. It, it's a design with a campus environment in the mind, so it, it captures and managed control and archived the different videos that's being recorded. It's, um, customizable, customizable to function via plugin, so we can add other things in if we see later that we may need certain things. Like, for one, the real-time awareness, we saw a need in one campus, and that, that part, we'll talk about in a minute, we did add that to one of the camera systems. But it has a five-year preventive maintenance parts and labor warranty, so what that is, is that if something happens with a camera, it breaks or start working, we get one, we get it replaced, and we get it up and running, so that's why we have that warranty. And like, um, Dr. Porter mentioned earlier, this is which, or Dr. Getwood mentioned, I think, one of, but this is what they see on their computers. We can set, we have it on most of the principals and some of the assistant principals', um, computers. So, and they also have, some of them have big fifty-five inch televisions in their office where they can see multiple cameras at once. You can set them to different views to where you can have all your doors up, or you can rotate through them and see different things. But then, like, if you have areas that, if somebody says something happened in a certain area, down on the left, there's a button to say maps, and you don't know, but you don't know which camera you want to look at. You click on that maps button, and then it brings up a map and shows you where the cameras are pointing. So you can go click on that particular camera on that, in that, in there, and it'll bring up that camera, and you'll be able to see that area, so you can view that area to see if anything's going on, or go back and get a recording of it, or whatever you need from it. This is a view of, one of the things we do, we, we got cameras on our, um, HVAC systems, because, you know, we've had people try to rob and steal things off of us, so we have cameras watching that on the different campuses. We have cameras in different areas in the school, like this is that pack in the gym, we have cameras on our football stadium watching the stands. So we, we can actually watch the stands, watch the gates, so we have cameras all over our football stadium out, so underneath the stadium, we got cameras everywhere. Then this is, um, at our doors, we got cameras at, this is our admin building right here, we got a camera at that door watching as people come in and out right there. We have cameras in our parking lots, this is in front of admin there, where we got cameras watching parking lots. And I could say, like, without Manera, we had an accident happen in front, and they, and we were able to pull that video and see that camera, that accident happen. This is Washington, we got cameras on their doors and their hallways, and that's on every campus. We make sure we cover all the doors and all the hallways to make sure that it's being, been able to be viewed. Now, this is what I was talking about, the real-time awareness, and on our ninth grade campus, they, they had a need and requested what they call a halo system. What this system does, it detects smoke, it detects vapes, it detects THC, and it detects sound. So if something was to go off, make that sensor go off, that sensor would go off, and there's a, on, on the screen that, where we use the V I system, it shows what it's detecting. So like, for instance, if there was somebody vaping in, in the restroom, it would turn red. It would send a text message and an email to whatever administrator is receiving those messages, and that administrator can go check on what's going on in that particular area. So, we can use a mobile device to view these cameras, we can use a computer, either Windows or Mac, and it's also on our, uh, we can view it through, um, a web browser like Chrome or Edge or Safari, things like that. So it's viewable between multiple types of computers and access through multiple type of devices. So, also with our cameras, there was a bill passed, Senate Bill five oh seven, a while, a couple of years ago, where we were required that if somebody needed a camera for special ed to view, there was also that put in place. So we were able to actually put the cameras in all of our special ed areas that's required. We don't have them activated unless it's requested, but we have the cameras there and available and ready for when it's needed. They're not being monitored because we can't have them activated unless it's a request, but they're there, so we, we have that capability, we ready for Senate, that Senate bill. Also, this, um, past year, we also, um, working with Mr. Metz in transportation, we installed cameras on all, uh, um, buses that are running. It's, um, forty-eight buses that have cameras on them, so they were able to view, um, act, in, incidents on buses, around their buses, like if somebody did something around the bus, the cameras kind of have like a three sixty recording of the buses and inside the buses, so they can actually see what's going on with the buses. So, um, that's where we have our cameras, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Jackson, did I understand you to say, in, in regards to the special education buses, repeat what you said about that.
Well, on our, on the buses, there's cameras on the buses, that, that, what I was talking about, the SB five oh seven is in the classrooms. There, yeah, the life skill rooms. They have cameras in those rooms that SB five oh seven said if a parent or someone requested to have a camera turned on there because they think something is happening with their student, they can request that. So we have that in there ready to go if that's requested to turn on.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's not something we are required to have on all the time, and, and each year, they have to request again.
Okay, okay, trustees.
Mr. Jackson, can you go back a couple of screens to, uh, the monitors that you said that, uh, were able to detect, uh, whether it was vaping or whether it was other medicinal uses? Um, the question I'm gonna have, um, is there any way that this system detects after the fact? Not vape, we're talking about marijuana and other, other uses, because of course, you know, there's a loud smell, you can smell marijuana. And the only reason why I'm asking, because I encounter some of this while on campus, and I just want to know, um, how are these students, uh, checked when they came, when they come in on the campus, and somebody, uh, show up late to the campus, to avoid being checked like the other students? So, can you address?
Well, I don't work on the campus with that, but I'm, I know from, from just seeing things go on that students only have one point of entry. They, and then when they come in, they go through the, the same check if they came at the first thing in the morning or later on in the afternoon. They still go through the same checks from, I understand from what I see on the campuses. And so they, they're gonna go through the same process, so if they slip something in, you know, people slip stuff into prison, so they, they try to do their best not to.
No, we're driving up, and we saw the kids, uh, participating, and we hollered at them, uh, so we knew what they were doing, because we smelled it.
Yeah, but then, if, if it's in this, and we don't have that in every school, we have that at the ninth grade right now. I know we're looking at trying to get it in some of the other schools, but, um, and I think Dr. Murphy's here, and she knows that when, when somebody vapes or do something like that, that thing does sound off, it turns red, I've seen it red before, and it lets them know that, and they go running, you know, to catch whoever was in that area to find, and if they don't catch the person, when they get there, they go back to the cameras, because it's all hooked up to the camera system, and it tells us what time it went off and everything, so they can actually look at the camera and see who was in that area at that time.
Thank you.
Good evening, all my wonderful, uh, staff members and principals. The process that we have in place right now for our campuses, I think are, uh, working well, and they're improving as each day goes. Um, we've been having security meetings with Dr. Getwood, and we've been speaking on things that we see that we need to do, and then we had the auditors come out and done a great job of finding some areas we needed to, uh, give some attention to. But, right now, we have check-in procedures at every campus, so everyone goes to a campus, they have to check in. They have to check in, and they need to go with the policies and the, the directions that we have given them. We asking all the visitors, uh, that, uh, come to the campus, go to the front of the campus, to the office, sign in. We have a system which monitors people that can't be on the campus because they have, uh, uh, maybe some run-ins that, uh, they can't be around children. Uh, we have, uh, single-point entries that we are working on every campus, where people are coming in that one entry and going out through that one entry. Uh, all visitors, any visitor that comes to the campus is required to sign in. They're required to sign in as well as sign out. Uh, we're assuring that doors are being closed three times a day. We have our, uh, custodial staff and others checking doors at, in the morning, after the bell ring, they're checking doors. At the, after the lunch period, they're checking doors. At the end of the day, they're checking doors, so we have door checks going. We're going to ensure that the campuses are secure. That is our mission. Uh, we have, uh, we're making, assure that all doors are functioning well. Our guys are going around the campuses, any doors that are being reported, they're immediately getting on it and getting it repaired. All the exterior doors have been numbered, so if law enforcement needs to come in, they'll know which doors and which to approach. Uh, we have made, uh, aerial maps, Mr. Jackson is working on them right now, where we can give it to, uh, our authorities, and they can see from on high which doors are where on the campuses. So we've put a lot of measures in place to ensure that our campuses are secure, and we're doing any and everything we can to make sure our principals are able to educate our children in a safe environment. Any questions?
Well, uh, Mr. Cipian, I, I can tell you one thing, I know for sure that the custodians are checking the doors. Uh, I was at my son's school one day, and I went in to pick him up, and, uh, Mr. Bree was adamant about going to check those doors. She had to write it down, she had to log it in, so what you said, I know for sure is getting done, because I saw it with my own two eyes.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Mr. Riddo, she's doing her job, she on her job over there at Port Akers. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I said, principal stand up, they don't even hear. They tired, but they don't hear either. We don't want to be that tired when they don't hear, hear the man, and then Mrs. Moody does a great job at keeping us, uh, keeping us ready and making sure we have some little cards that I forgot to throw these little cards. Now, when you see these cards here, we're happy about our cards. Now, we, we're happy in PAISD because we see Bs, we have A, we have a C overall, but we went up higher from seventy-four to seventy-eight, and we've worked for those grades. We've worked for them. It didn't come easy, it didn't come easy at all. We worked for every bit of it, and we're proud of it, if no one else in Texas is proud, we're proud. Mrs. Moody, you make sure they understand what we have done to earn these grades. Speak.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. I mean, you pretty much covered it, Dr. Porter, I don't know if I have anything to add. But, uh, as Dr. Porter said, my name is Jill Moody, I'm. But, uh, as Dr. Porterey said, my name is Jill Moody, I'm the district testing coordinator. It's a pleasure to stand before you all again tonight. Uh, President Ambrose and the board of trustees, I do want to thank you all for taking the time out to sit here on these Thursday nights and hear about what our district is doing and also using your influence in the community to do uh, what's best for our kids and have a positive impact on our PAISD students. So I also wanted to thank you before I started my presentation. Uh, I'm going to, uh, keep this really brief, this is a brief presentation. Now, when I was in the classroom, I like to rhyme, so I'm gonna leave you with this rhyme. And it says, "This is a short presentation, but this is all public information." So that means I may not cover every single detail of the accountability report, but this is public information, so if there's anything that you want to dive deeper into, you can always go to tea.texas.gov and look up our reports. You can also go to paisd.org, go to the student assessment page. And all of our, uh, ratings and our most up-to-date reports are on our website. Uh, to the right of the screen, I have a little agenda and that's just to keep me on track and to keep me from going over on my time as well. So first, I'm gonna kind of go over some reflective questions. These questions are gonna help us to see if we are meeting our goals, but also to kind of guide us through as we look at the data. Then I'm going to kind of go over the accountability overview, just in case some of you aren't familiar with the verbiage that I'm using or how the domains work, I'll quickly go over that. Then we'll get into the school ratings, the district rating, and we'll break that down by domain. And then we'll also look at some comparison data. So, the biggest, I guess, goal or concern we've had for the past two years is have we closed the COVID gap? Are we closing the COVID gap? How can we close the COVID gap? So that's the biggest question that I am gonna raise tonight, are we closing the COVID gap? And I came up with three guiding questions to help us figure out whether our district is on the right track with closing that COVID gap. The first question is, did individual students show growth? Did we perform better than last year? And did the district get closer to or exceed its pre-COVID performance, which is that 2019 performance? So as we go through the presentation, I'm gonna go back to those questions and ask the room, okay, did we meet that question? And then you guys can kind of look at the data and see if we're on the right track. So as I mentioned, I just want to kind of explain, uh, what I mean when I say domain one, domain two, or domain three. So if you look on the screen, the far left column, that is domain one. So if I'm talking about domain one, I'm talking about student achievement. The easiest way to, uh, interpret that is, that's star scores. So if I talk about domain one, for the most part, that's star scores. When we get to secondary, like the high school level, that is star scores, CCMR, and the graduation rate. When I talk about domain two, that's that middle column, I'm talking about school progress. So pretty much student growth and then relative performance. How did we do compared to other districts that have the same amount of economically disadvantaged students? And then for the third column, that's domain three, and that is closing the gaps. And so there are some targets that we have to meet and they're in the categories of academic achievement, which is basically star, uh, academic growth, English language proficiency, which we measure with TELPASS, uh, another star component, and then for high schools, it also will add that CCMR and the graduation rate. Anytime you see the rating NR, that just means that it's not rated, it didn't quite make it to a seventy, so they did not receive a rating at all, or a letter grade at all in those categories. With that being said, let's go through our celebrations, because as Dr. Porterey said, I feel like this is something, something to celebrate. So on the right, I'm not gonna read it to you because you all, I know you all can read, so I'm not gonna read it, uh, verbatim, but those are the campus ratings on the far right. But then I do want to go through the celebrations, uh, hopefully it's appropriate to give applause where applause is due. The first celebration that I want to announce is that we did have an A-rated campus, which was Sam Houston Elementary. And that is, and that is under, under the leadership of Ms. Marcy Sharp. And then we also had ten schools rated B or higher. So, those schools were Adams, DeQueen, Houston, of course, Lakeview, Port Akers, Travis, Terrell, Washington, we can't forget Wheatly, and Jefferson. Um, okay, and then we also had four schools that received an A rating in one or more domains. And what that means is, they may not have had an overall rating as an A, but there were some As in their, uh, when they were rated. So those schools are Adams, Houston, Lakeview, and Port Akers, and they had As in school progress and academic growth. We had nine campuses that went up one or more letter grades. So DeQueen went up from a C to a B, Houston went up from a B to an A, Lakeview, Port Akers, Travis, Terrell, Washington, and Wheatly went up from a C to a B. And then we had Thomas Jefferson Middle School, under the leadership of Dr. Kristy Lewis, that went up three letter grades from an F to a B. We also had some campuses that, uh, earned distinctions, which basically means if they were placed on a list with about forty schools in Texas that are on the same, that have the same number of Ecodis kids or the same, similar demographics, they're placed on a list with those schools and they're compared to them. If you earn a distinction, that means that you're in the top twenty-five percent of your comparison group in that area. So we have Jefferson, Houston, and Port Akers, they all earned distinctions in comparative academic growth. And then we had Jefferson, Houston, and Adams, they earned distinctions in comparative closing the gaps. Now, as Dr. Porterey said, with all of that excitement, somehow we still averaged to a C. But it's okay because we are two points away from a B, so that is also something to celebrate. And if we go back to question three, it was, did we meet or exceed 2019 performance? So our goal was to at least catch up to where we were in 2019. We actually exceeded that performance because in 2019, we were seventy-four C, so now we've gone up to a seventy-eight C and that's only two points from B, so we almost hopped a letter grade. So that is also something to celebrate. Now, as it relates to domain one, our student achievement, at this time, we are not rated, we didn't quite make a seventy, we were at a sixty-five. Now, if we go back to question two, which was, did we do better than last year? This chart can, kind of explains or outlines, uh, the answer to that question. So, last year, we were not rated, so we really can't compare a letter grade, but we can compare the composite score and the percentages. So if you look at 2021, we were a composite score of twenty-three. If you look at 2022, we're up to thirty-one. And just be mindful, that's not percentages, that's just the composite score. Uh, if you look at the star performance, last year for all subjects, the average was forty-four, we went up to fifty-seven. For ELA, it was forty-eight, went up to fifty-nine. For math, it was forty percent and went up to fifty-five. For CCMR, we went from thirty-nine to forty-seven. Now, if you look at graduation rate, that one's a little tricky because even though it's on the 2021 and 2022 report, it's not necessarily the class of 2021 and 2022. So these two, uh, scores, our skill scores, don't necessarily represent, or they don't represent, the class of 2021 and 2022. This is actually eighteen and nineteen, so we'll have those rates in the future so that you would know exactly how the class of 2022, uh, performed. Uh, if we go to question two, uh, as I mentioned earlier, did we do better than last year? I would say, looking at the scores, every average went up, so I would say yes. So we are, we're not where we want to be, but we are closing that COVID gap. Now, the second domain is school progress, and that was our, our winning domain, we got a, uh, we were rated B. The easiest way to explain this is, we look at individual students and how they perform from year to year. So we'll look at their previous year's score versus their current year's score and we calculate growth. The easiest way to look at this chart is, all the green numbers, we got one point for those kids. If it's yellow, we got half a point. Now, I've made it a little easier for you because if you look on the left, I kind of outlined our performance hoppers. Those are the kids that we basically earned a point for, so I'll go through that really quickly. So if it says, "Did not meet to did not meet," that doesn't necessarily mean those are kids who failed and then they failed again and then that's just it. These are kids who may have not made that approaches level, but they still showed one year's growth. So we got nine hundred sixty-nine points for those students. They were, they still earned a point because they actually showed a full year's growth, so that is a good thing. We had eight hundred eleven students who went from did not meet to approaches. We had two hundred twelve students who went from did not meet to meets. We had fifty-five students who actually went from did not meet to masters. Uh, we had three hundred thirty-four students, again, kind of how it was in the previous category. They went from approaches to approaches, so they're still in the same performance category, but they scored, they showed that year's growth, so we earned a point for each of those students, so that was three hundred thirty-four. We had three hundred thirty-six students who went from approaches to meets. We had a hundred seventy-seven students who went from approaches to masters. We also had two hundred twenty-six, again, students who stayed in the meets to meets, but actually earned the point for growth. And then we had two hundred eighteen who went from meets to masters. We also had a hundred and ninety-nine students who maintained their level of masters. And in that category, they don't really do the, whether it's a year, if you stay in masters, you get the point. Because they don't, you know, they don't, say you get an eighty-five and a ninety, they don't really look at that as a difference. So regardless, if you stay in masters, you'll get that. We also, it's not on this chart, but we also had three hundred sixteen students who we earned half a point for, so that also added to our category, which had us calculate to a B. So if we look at question one, and it says, "Did individual students show growth?" The answer is yes, we had a lot of students that either were performance hoppers, went from one category to the next, or even if they stayed in their category, they performed better and showed a year's growth, and so we did earn points for them. The relative performance is just a comparison between our district and districts who have a close amount of, uh, their percentage of economically disadvantaged students are similar to ours, and so we compare to them. And that is where that relative performance score of a C comes from. All right, the last domain is closing the gaps, and that was the one I kind of had a hard time because I was like, I don't like seeing all those no's. But I had to back up and look at the growth, because that's the thing, we're trying to close that COVID gap. So the easiest way to explain this is, if you look on the left, there are certain categories that, uh, we are scored on. Each category has a certain amount of targets. Those targets come from the different, different demographics, which is why you see it kind of broken down on the right. Now, we know, uh, that we did meet our target for our LP status, which is our English language proficiency, so I just put a check there. I'm not gonna focus too much on that because we know we met that target. For graduation status, we don't have anything to compare it to, so I couldn't really focus on that either. However, we do have comparison data, uh, from 2021 for academic achievement and school quality status. So if you look to the right, that's what I have, I have the chart for academic achievement status and the chart for school quality status. Now, this one is not percentages by approaches, this is percentages by meets. So approaches is what we consider quote-unquote passing, but then meets is that next performance level. So if we look at those categories, we can see that from twenty-one to twenty-two, in almost all, I believe there, I saw one that didn't, but in almost every single category, there was a jump in the percentage. So each score went up. So if you look at all students, you can see that, uh, for ELAR, it was twenty-four, went up to thirty-three. You can see fifteen went up to, uh, twenty-three, and then in school quality status, you can see thirty-four and it went up. So, even though we're not where we want to be, we're not rated, we can see that we are still closing gaps because we are still performing better each year. So, to answer question two again, did we perform better than last year? And I would say that that category also shows yes to that question. Now, uh, I know last year, or earlier this year, when I did the taper presentation, I picked out a few districts that have similar demographics, similar number of economically disadvantaged students, and I kind of compared what our taper report showed versus what those districts showed. And Mr. Getwood asked me if I would continue to do that, so tonight I do have that, and that's what you see on the screen now. So, I did keep those districts anonymous, but you have our ratings, our overall, overall rating, which was seventy-eight and a C, and then you have us compared to districts that look like us. And as you can see, we pretty much outperformed two-thirds of those districts and we're kind of clove, really close to that third district. So, uh, just so you kind of have an idea of, okay, what do we look like compared to districts that actually look like us and have the struggles that our students have, uh, and so that is kind of that comparison that you can, uh, look at. Two of them are. And that actually, uh, concludes my presentation, unless you all have any questions.
Uh, first, thank you for the presentation, that is definitely something to celebrate and I am really excited about where we are going. Uh, my question is, have we already identified or earmarked the methods that we use that can, that we can attribute to us moving forward?
So, I think your question may be addressed in the strategic plan. So what we have is, our district has a strategic plan, and I'm sure if Dr. Porterey hadn't shared it with you, he will, very soon. Okay, y'all have a copy. So basically, the focus is on, number one, something that Dr. Porterey talked about earlier, family engagement. Some things is out of our control and we gotta get these parents involved in doing what they're doing at home. We also have restorative practices because a lot of our educational, uh, needs really have roots in behavior. And so we're doing restorative practices, and then we also are working with high-quality curriculum. Dr. Owens probably can kind of tell you a little more about that. And then also professional learning, making sure that our teachers are continually developing in the area of curriculum and delivery of instruction, so that's some of the things that we're working on. There's a lot more in the strategic plan, so I definitely would recommend just taking a night and just going through, because there's so much to it. But those are just four of the components that we're doing to make sure that our students are growing.
First off, congratulations to all our principals, uh, and our students for making such a great effort. But I know we can do better and I know we will do better. Uh, the only thing I have is, are we using all of our resources and doing? We have anything we need, so that's the key we have, that might need something more on the campus. Please don't be afraid to hit that hand. If we need some extra money or some extra resources, stuff that I will bring you up. The money is if I were kids, not others.
Now, one thing I can say, and I can only speak for my department, so principals, don't shoot me. Um, I do know that from my department, we've been trying to like, almost cancel subscriptions because we had so many resources that it, they weren't all able to be used because the district actually provided almost too many resources. So I can say that usually when principals, just from my department, from my perspective, when they ask for things, most of the time, they aren't getting the programs, the educational programs that they need. Uh, so I can't say that, that is the issue. And I do know that we have, I'm not sure if they discontinued it from COVID, but we have had extended day programs, especially because of the HB forty-five forty-five. So what we've been doing is, with HB forty-five forty-five, if there, if there is any student who did not pass their STAR test, they are required to have thirty hours of accelerated instruction. So they get pulled out either during school or they, some, uh, schools have like an actual period that they've set aside just for that tutorial session. And some schools are using, um, after school, and then they also use summer school as well. And then I know personally that some of the curriculum supervisors are actually going on campuses, attending POCs, modeling for teachers, but also going in classrooms and personally teaching. So that is something that I've witnessed with my eyes, but I don't know if Dr. Porterey wanted to add anything to that.
I'll just say, Mrs. Moody, we, we have all the resources we can possibly use. I'll just say, Mrs. Moody, we, we have all the resources we can possibly use. Our principals are not bashful at asking for anything that they want. We will get them what they need. We feed kids, we clothe kids, we bring them home, we pay light bills, we pay water bills, we talk with the parents, we discipline, we love. The only thing we're not doing is housing them every night. I don't know what else we can do. Um, we're doing everything possible, and we'll do more if we have the resources. But I mean, we don't have a problem with purchasing and giving whatever they need in order for them to be successful. To our board members, thank you for allowing us to do what we do, because you allow us to give the funds to our schools and do what we need to do. And one other group that we must, must appreciate, and that is our children. You know, with all of the problems that we have as adults, and the craziness that we go through, our children go through craziness as well. And for them to have come to school and taken that test and did the very best that they could to bring us to this point is to be commendable to them. We will keep going on, we will keep doing, and we will keep asking. And I'll tell you this, some of our principals ask for things over and over and over again, sometimes just too much. And if, and if we could find more staff, we would. If you find some staff for us, bring them. We just, Mr. White, we just flew in five Spanish teachers, three from Colombia, one from Mexico, and the other from Spain. They're here. We're getting everything we need. We've given them stipends to get here. We, we, Mr. White was on the phone finding apartments for them. We, Lamar is helping them. We have two that are living at Lamar. We will do everything. We will open our doors, we will open our pocketbooks, we do everything we can. All we ask is for the support of this community, of our parents, to send a child to us that we can teach. That is it. We don't want them to teach anything. We will teach if they send a child to us that is loved. And I don't think that's too much to ask. Thank you, Ms. Moody.
Yes, sir.
Okay, President Ambrose, Board trustee, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. And again, thank you, principals. Thank you for what you do. Um, we appreciate you, so thank you. Now, minutes. Consider and if appropriate, approve the minutes of the July 16, 2022 Board Workshop, the July 28, 2022 Regular Board Meeting, and the August 4, 2022 Board Budget Retreat. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved in second, and we will accept and approve those minutes from those meetings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Trustees, if you will please take the time to review items one through six. These are proposed budget and tax rate agenda items. We will vote on them separately. I will read each one of them separately, and I will call for a motion and a second, and ultimately, an approval on each one of them individually. So please take a few moments to review items one through six. Number one. Consider and if appropriate, approve the resolution authorizing the defense and optional redemption of certain outstanding bonds and containing other matters related thereto. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. It has been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number two. Adopt the proposed 2022-2023 budget attachments are pending. Can I have a motion? Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three. Interest in sinking fund tax rate of .576379 per $100 of taxable value for the 2022 appraisal row. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item four. Maintenance and operations tax rate of 1.007000 per $100 of taxable value for the 2022 appraisal row. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five. Tax rate ordinance setting the tax rate 2022-2023. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Before we call for, before I call for a motion on item number three, there's certain language that has to be read into the minutes, and it is following. For the 2022-2023 school year, we delegated contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code 11.1511 C4 to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under Texas Education Code 48.257 and Texas Education Code Chapter 49, Subchapters A and D. And the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education as authorized under Texas Education Code 49.006. This included approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit or the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit. Item number six. Agreement for the purchase of attendance credit for the 2022-2023 school year. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number six is approved. That actually concludes the portion where we have adopted the budget and tax rate for the 2022-2023 school year. Trustees, now if you will, please review on the consent agenda item, the following agenda items, which are of a routine and are of recurrent nature, have been designated content agenda items by the Board President per policy BE Local. All the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee. In which event, the item or items will be withdrawn immediately for individual consideration in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. Trustees, if you will review items one through 29. Items number one through 29, please take a moment to review those items.
Madam President, I can make a motion that we accept the consent agenda items as follows.
There's a motion on the floor, can I have a second? There's a motion in the second. All those in favor to accept agenda items one through 29, say aye.
Aye.
Item number one through 29 of the consent agenda has been accepted. Personnel, Dr. Porter.
I've given you the list of teachers for your approval.
Is there a motion? I have a motion in second. All those in favor to uh, approve the employment of teachers, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion. Trustee nurses.
Well, Madam President, I would like to pull the two discussion items to review the dress code, as well as to review the public participation.
Is the desire of trustee nurses to pull those items for discussion to possibly be reviewed at a later date? Um, information, Dr. Porter.
Uh, we have no uh, attendance records from last month, but I will say that we have, we've gone over the 8,000 mark, 8,000 students. We have 8,077 as of today, and we are proud, more students are coming. We have about 200 more students today than we had this time last year, and we're happy about that. We want our kids to come every day.
Thank you. Before I call for an adjournment, the September Board of Trustees meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 20th, due to the boards and superintendents attendance at our annual TASCASB conference. At this time, I'll call for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second. The meeting is now adjourned. Have a good evening, thank you all for coming.